All right, this is Board of Finance regular meeting Thursday, March twenty first, six P M. This meeting will be recorded, made available on the town's website pursuant to state law. If you're heading remotely, please remember to mute your microphone unless you are speaking. Anyone just spinning remotely should state their name and title if applicable at the outside of the education that person is speaking. All votes taken during which any of the members of this body participating remotely should be taken by roll call unless the vote is unanimous. Chat feature will not be utilized or considered during this meeting. All right, call to order. Rebecca O'Donnell.
Uh, here.
Steve Kirsch.
President.
Samantha Spino.
Here.
Catherine Dissofer.
She's here, she's just walking in.
Perfect. We'll count that and then Nick said the meeting.
Yeah, hold on one second. And she's here.
We counted her in. Perfect.
I'm sorry.
He reckoned out of the footsteps.
And we have Rambonowski.
Here.
Heidi Mead, I saw is on the phone.
Yeah.
Uh, Frank Dutch.
I'm here.
Terry Rooney.
Here.
And I don't know if Joe, is Joe there? I can't see.
I just walked in. Thanks.
Perfect. All right, and Deb Hen.
Deb's not here.
Yeah, so Deb's out on a leave for a while.
That's right. I remember that. Got it. Okay. All right, uh, approval of amended special meeting minutes for January twenty fifth. Want to make a motion?
You've Kirsch, I move to approve the amended special meeting minutes for January twenty fifth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Stopper, second.
Any discussion?
Sorry.
Hearing none, any opposed? You guys hearing?
Yep.
Yes.
No, nobody opposed.
Oh, that was great. All right, then we pass unanimously. Meeting minutes for February fifteenth.
So Mike, there was no voting um record in the in the package as far as I could tell.
I believe and I can, I'll confirm the with the town clerk, I believe if the minutes are submitted in a, you know, within whatever the timeframe is, is in the encompass the voting record, you don't have to file a voting record. I think typically a voting record.
So I can just, I'll just leave those words out.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, Steve, Steve Kirch, I move to approve the meeting minutes for February fifteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
Rebecca O'Donnell, second.
Hey, hey, Mike, I have one thing. It been there in my comments, it talks about uh, full year outlook. I think it said two to two point five percent. That should be million.
Million, right. Okay, good. You can make that change.
Again, I don't know if we need to get to that level of nit. I won't do it in the future if need be, but.
Now, it's always good to correct it if we see something wrong. Absolutely.
Okay.
And Mike, I've got one other correction at the top of that same page, page three or four. It says motion to approve real estate suspension recommendations. That was a carryover. Um, that's not what that section was about. That was the eighty thousand dollars for parking wreck. So that, that underlying title, whatever you want to call that, just needs to be removed.
Corrected. Okay. All right. Any other comments?
I just want to make sure, uh.
You got those changes, Ron?
This has to be just this, I go here, it has to be changed. On page three of four.
At the very top of page three and at the very bottom is, is Frank's changing in the last seconds.
Okay.
All right, anybody got anything else? All right, any opposed? Hearing none, we pass unanimously. And now we have, uh, first selectmen.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Manjos. Thank you, Board of Finance. Uh, just a couple of updates. Uh, one, the budget was passed unanimously by Town Council, nine to zero, uh, last council. As well as one other thing that, uh, affects uh, budget to a degree is, uh, the police contract was approved. Um, so that will be, uh, that was an H R wage adjustment, so that was definitely, uh, covered within the budget. And also there was one other item that is eluding me right now. Uh, but, uh, those are the, those are the, those are the, uh, two main topics that, uh, that, uh, happened in councils, so.
I think they added a donation in, if I recall.
Excuse me?
I think they might have added a donation in there.
Family justice donation.
So the Center for, yeah, thank you very much for bringing that up. The, uh, the library, uh, also was reinstated. Uh, after I met with Nicole, Nicole had expressed concerns about some part-time work and some, uh, programs, so we decided to, uh, reinstate that. The Center for Family Justice, yes, there was a donation made of ten thousand dollars, but the Board of Finance cannot uh, distribute that without having a, uh, liaison appointed by the First Selectman's Office to the Center of Family Justice. Uh, that will be being done on Monday night, so we do have a liaison going. So I've been in constant contact with, uh, Deb Greenwood and Matt Reilly, who's the director there. They're very excited about that. Um, so thank you for bringing that up, Mike. Yes, those are also two things that occurred.
All right. Uh, Superintendent?
Hey, folks, uh, thank you, Ben, for having me, uh. In just terms of the, uh, the current year, uh, you know, satisfied where we are right now, just wanted to give people just a quick update, um, uh, where we are with insurance right now. We're still working with our insurance broker, but trying to I do have a budget. I know we're going to come up with a date for, uh, joint, uh, we're going to go to finance meeting. Um, so we're trying to mitigate any adjustment as much as we can through the insurance. But right now, I think Ron would be most comfortably saying between seven to eight hundred thousand. Um, this is where we're looking for, uh, insurance. And we still have more talks with our, uh, with our broker and some other folks, so again, try to heat up as much of that as possible.
And is that looking at the state plan, Joe, just so I understand?
Yes, yeah, we were on with the, uh, we were on the other day, so it's, it looks like either way, and I really haven't had these conversations so much with the, uh, with the Board of Ed or with the unions, but we'll probably be moving to Anthem no matter what. It's just whether it's with the state plan in a block or, uh, I'm sorry, uh, with the state plan or if we stay in a, uh, uh, block outside of the state. So we have some, uh, conversations to, to be had.
Joe, do you see that mitigating the reductions in the, uh, your proposed budget compared to what went to, uh, oh, did you go to Town Council, what, uh, First Selectman did?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, that was, uh, that was. And Mike, just a second. Just so you know, the town's basically in the same situation and looking probably, you know, either more likely than not the, uh, state plan.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, uh, thank you, Joe, because that was the other item that I wanted to speak about. Uh, yes, it looks like, so if we looked at the budget on the municipal side, we put four hundred thousand dollars contingency because of that uh, unknown fact. However, it looks like, uh, what was in place, I think, Ron, you budgeted for twenty percent on the town side and looks like it's going to come in uh, significantly less. So that's good news for us that we won't be to use that contingency that was put on reserve in the budget. So that was the other point I wanted to make, so thank you.
Yeah, so when, just so you know, dur- during that process, Mike, we were, um, the, the town, we, we initially got a number of fifteen percent, which was used on the board side. And then, uh, about three, four weeks later, the town got a number that was closer to twenty percent, actually north of twenty percent.
Twenty-eight percent.
Yeah. Jesus. So the, the state plan, um, it is looking, you know, it, it will be less than that on the, um, the, the rates of increase are a little different because the, the, the town and board rates are different right now, but it's, it's probably going to be about a I'm going to say around a ten percent increase to the, to the town and, uh, just shy of, uh, just shy of a five point five percent increase to the board.
So. And just in, in the spirit of complete transparency there, um, the, the reason for the dramatic increase is United Healthcare uh, last year lost about a half a million dollars on the town side, so they're looking to, uh, make an attempt to, uh, to recoup that. Uh, so they came in at a very, very high number, and it, it also seems that there's not an appetite for United Healthcare to be in the municipal uh, game anymore, so that's part of the issue. Uh, but the state plan definitely looks, uh, very appealing. I know that the employees in town hall have had that in the past, and they really enjoyed it because of preventative medicine. Their, their approach to preventative medicine was stronger, uh, than this other policy and uh, talking to some law enforcement people, they had mentioned to me that, uh, the state plan actually caught some health conditions that wouldn't, would have normed, had not been caught under the United Healthcare plan, so that, that I think the municipal side will be very happy. Uh, it, it's, it's a win-win. I, I, it's upsetting that we're celebrating a nine point two increase. But, uh, but
Welcome to healthcare, yeah.
We're going to see a lot of happy employees going back to that plan, so that's good news.
Awesome.
I actually have a couple of questions. Um, I think like first with the Board of Ed plan, I think we said it was, is it a fifteen percent increase over?
We had, we had, we had budgeted fifteen percent.
Budget fifteen, looking like coming in at five and a half.
Correct.
Okay, and then.
Well, it was budgeted, it was budgeted fifteen. Um,
And then all.
And then, uh, I'm, well, the state plan is at five and a half. Um, the, uh, the other plan is slightly higher than that. The question is if you get into the state plan, you're in it for three years. So, you know, we want to be really, want to be very careful with what we do. What will, yeah, anyways.
And then the locking, you don't know if you're going to get what the increases are going to be in year two and three.
Exactly.
Okay.
That is the, that is a dangerous trajectory with the state plan. However, uh, we did skip a year because we run the state plan and went to United Healthcare for obvious reasons. And, uh, we, the increase this year to the state plan, Ron, if I have this right, was only two percent.
Yeah, within the plan, yes.
Within the plan. Uh, but because we weren't in the plan, we're subject to the increase from last year, which motivated the change. Uh, it seems the projections they're speaking about, as far as what I've known, have been in the single digits, so let's hope we're, we're on a positive path here with that.
So when will we nail these down on both sides?
More than likely, I would say by, by month's end.
Okay, by the end of this month.
Yeah.
Okay, well, well before we have to take action.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, yes.
So then that four hundred thousand dollar Board of Finance contingency, would that be then available?
Yeah.
Potentially go back to Board of Ed? Or wherever?
Yes, it would.
All right, let's, let's not get into.
Not that I make that choice or anything, but I'm just saying, I think that was like another thing, you know, like so that would be a lot of money that you can put back into some, a place that might need it.
We're going to have plenty of time to, I don't want us to get, we don't really have it slated for tonight to do a budget meeting, so.
I just, I guess it's a process. I'm not sure how it works. If like that's now available to.
Yeah, everything, every line item.
Everything is, every line item is available to us.
It's available to us, and we'll just make decisions based on the best information we have.
Exactly.
And then, and we can change it up until the legal deadline for completing our budget.
Thank you all.
Off of insurance, just one other.
Anything else, Joe? Yeah.
Yeah, he's got one. Yeah, just one other update. Dave, just, thank you, Dave, for reminding me. I forgot. Um, so finally, um, we went through our, thanks to Steve for, uh, being a liaison from the Board of Finance uh, on the selection committee for our, uh, request for proposal for a facility study. We did choose a firm. Um, the nice thing is the, the, the firm that we all liked the most also was the, uh, the lowest qualified bidder as well. Um, so, um, we're pretty happy. Yeah, between the lowest and the highest, uh, bidder, it was about ninety thousand dollars. So, um, and they also, we also asked them to help us with some of the work towards the, um, there's a new state statute that you have to have all your buildings, um, inspected for, uh, their H V A C systems. Uh, and they're going to work with us on that. And we had that, some of that work in the capital budget. And I think that's going to come in lower than, I think, pretty significantly lower. I don't, I don't want to say exactly.
No.
But pretty significantly lower than what we had put in the capital, so. Hope all the other savings there.
I have a question. Is that for all municipal buildings, that inspection, or just education?
Uh, the five buildings in Scottsdale.
Okay, all right.
Now, just so clear, Joe, that's for the H V A C.
Inspection. So there's, so there's, no, it's not. Good question. Um, so when we went into, we, we, this was, we went into the, uh, we went into the facility study, or we went into the RFP for facilities, I see, you know, where we had enrollment, class. We configure the schools, all that. So that's, that was all part of that process. As we went through that process, and when we invited the firms and so they all, uh, submitted a bid based on that. Then we also, as we were doing that, we realized a lot of the work that they're going to be doing. They're also looking at. Can be, there's a layover there. Yeah, yeah, there's some layover, so let's not pay and pay twice, so they can, uh, do some of that work for us.
Well, I just want to compliment you and the Board of Education for doing that due diligence, because I, I was notified on that as it was kind of moving along, so that's very helpful.
Thanks.
You know, to save some of that money, so thank you.
And that HAC piece is, is significant.
And the other thing with that H back piece, which is really stressful, is there's only a few companies in the state that actually do it. I believe it's four companies in the state. Am I correct when I say that?
Very few.
Yeah, so. It also puts a burden on those companies to perform, because they have to do it in every municipality, so it's a big lift for those firms, but, uh.
July twenty-five deadline, so it's impossible.
Yeah.
And just the timing of the facility study, with the timing of this state mandate allowed us to just merge them and stabilize them.
Now, just let me ask you, just on the Board of Ed, is there any state money going towards that, or is that basically just unfunded mandate?
Unfunded.
Unfunded. Thank you.
Okay, anything else, Joe?
That's all. Thanks, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, appreciate it. All right, new business. Uh, Ron, you want to walk us through the pro sale of fire apparatus?
Yeah, so actually, um, Chief. Sure. So, uh, Chief Catalano is here from Monroe Fire Department. So I think we can, um, get, get a lot more detailed in, uh, accuracy, better accuracy than I could.
Yeah, give us the clip, that's merchant, go ahead. Thanks, Chief.
Uh, so, uh, thanks for the time tonight. Um, after a little over thirty years in the department, I had taken over as chief, uh, last year, and with our leadership team, we revisited our, our long-term strategic plan, including our apparatus replacement plan and our facilities plan. Uh, so we approached, uh, Selectman Rooney and, and, uh, Ron, earlier this year, uh, sort of an interesting, uh, output of that, which was a proposal that if the fair market value, uh, in the, in the market warrants it, um, potentially selling a town-owned, uh, fire apparatus. This is a ladder truck that temporarily, um, sits in the EMS headquarters building on Jockey Hollow Road. Um, essentially, the, the main reasons for that, we can get into some operational stuff if you'd like, but um, you know, for, for many years, there've been discussions about addition and renovation to the Monroe Fire Headquarters around the corner on Shelton Road. Um, essentially, that building goes back to nineteen forty-eight, so while there are a lot of apparatus space there, um, those are actually built, they're not built to accommodate any of the modern fire trucks. Uh, all trucks are too long, too wide, um, and too tall to basically sit in those bays. So we could barely fit a pickup truck in the three bays on the right, and the ones on the left could not fit a larger truck. So, um, due to a series of, of delays and issues, including the pandemic, um, we did have an architectural study done, but it was done in the height of the pandemic. And the prices came back, and things like plywood and studs were at their highest of all time, so due to some financing um, delays and then other projects getting the EMS facility done, um, and more recently, the community center project that came up. Long story short, it's been a number of years, and we're still on a spot where we can't put that truck in our firehouse. Our goal really is to have that Jockey Hollow Road facility just be an EMS facility where they have full access to that, could park all their vehicles inside. And we would have all our fire apparatus centralized in this one station on Shelton Road. Um, what's unique about this and the reason that we're here is typically when we sell a fire truck, a town-owned truck, in a town in Monroe, they're anywhere between fifteen and thirty years old, and the residual value and the market value for those is relatively small. So you're talking twenty thousand to maybe fifteen thousand dollars depending on condition. Um, and all the time I've been here, I think the largest sale we ever had was in twenty eighteen, when we sold our old ladder truck to Newtown. That was a fifteen-year-old truck, and we sold that for two hundred thousand dollars. Um, we think, and it's very difficult because there's no market comps, given the really good condition of this truck and its relative young age, that the truck is worth anywhere between seven hundred and fifty and nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, it is being underutilized right now because we don't run that station as a firehouse. We, we have members that will come here to get their equipment and then go down there to get the truck if it's warranted, but it's not used as a fire station anymore, um, given the EMS use. So the truck is underutilized. Um, as a truck gets older, it's now six years old, the carrying costs are going up. So almost every year, the maintenance repairs cost is doubling. That's, that is what happens, and also because it's not utilized as much just like anything else, when we do use it, then there's mechanical issues. So the costs are growing, the, it's an underutilized asset. And given the cost of trying to do the renovations to the station, my discussions with Mr. Rooney, like, um, you know, we, we would certainly like to sort of use those proceeds, if you will, to help toward the addition of a firehouse. And when that is done in a few years, we would go back to our apparatus pla- plan, has us getting another ladder truck that would fit in there. It would be something smaller and more versatile piece of equipment. But honestly, the way construction is right now, when you get that project off the ground, we're talking about a couple more years. So a couple more years of the truck sort of being underutilized and then losing its market value. The reason the value is really high right now is the cost of a new fire truck, as you probably know from, from other approvals, is quite astronomical. Um, and the supply chain issues in the industry are tremendous. So if you're a fire department replacement truck, it's going to take you three to four years to get something new. So if there's something good on the market, we think it, it's pretty marketable at a high price right now.
And what was the original cost on that truck?
Uh, one point two million.
Correct.
So if you remember, Mr. Chairman, back, I don't remember what year, but I was on council, we'd approved bonding for about three to for fire trucks. That was one of the apparatus that was chosen at the time. The belief was they would be able to extend that ladder to get to certain houses after and the, the idea of that truck, the concept was very good from the fire department that, you know, you could park on the road and launch that ladder out and get closer to a house. However, after using it for years and years, they realized the maneuverability of that vehicle, the size of that vehicle wasn't actually achieving completely what they were hoping it would do. And, um, thank you to Chief Catalano for giving up, uh, the big toy. It's, uh, you know, it's hard for the fire to give up a big fire engine like that, but, uh, but yes, I mean, if it's not being utilized and sitting and these things, uh, if they sit and they're not used, there's a lot of rotting and dry rotting that happens in the rubberized products. So right now, having it be valued, uh, where it is, uh, I, I think it's a great move, and thank you for, for doing that, that study there and having the fire department agree with it, because if everybody doesn't agree, it, it doesn't happen. The other thing that I just wanted to bring up is a big point of contention during the construction of EMS building, uh, because there is nowhere to put it, as Chief Catalano said. So when we were, I was part of S B C at that time, and I believe the architect was Brian Humes, and it was before you were chief, and, and we had walked around. The, the perception of the build was, it revolved around that fire truck. Now that we don't have to build around that fire truck, we can redesign that building and put money in more uses other than garage space for that large apparatus. So that actually is going to change the plan a little bit. We are going to re, uh, revisit that. We will have those conversations during uh, the strategic, strategic planning committee. So without, uh, talking too much, I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Catalano. Uh, that's that.
All right.
So Mike, I've got a couple of questions. Is that the only ladder truck in town?
No, so there's another one, uh, that Stephanie has, the, the North Main Street Station, up by Upper Pepper Street.
Okay, so there were some concerns that I had heard because of some of the constructions, some commercial buildings that have been a few stories tall, and people were concerned, so. So that just means we, we.
Yeah, so the, the plan would be, so, you know, vacating that station on Jockey Hollow Road, you have this firehouse within two point zero miles and a Stephanie Firehouse within three miles. So from a I S O rating perspective, there's no issue. We've talked to them. We have adequate coverage, uh, in town. The plan, as I said, would be after the building is done to still have a ladder truck, especially with the growth that we're seeing, multi-story apartment buildings and other buildings on one eleven and on twenty-five. In the meantime, uh, we also have access to mutually, so called the Long Hill Fire Department will be an automatic mutually with the White Hills Company off of one ten Shelton has a ladder truck. So I feel like we're adequately covered that, you know, over these next few years. But the longer term plan would for us to go back to having two ladder trucks, but one that's more versatile.
Smaller, right.
That we have now. Yeah, we have one water, it's basically a pumper with a ladder.
The ladder, yeah.
So that would be our first out piece of apparatus, uh, and we'd get a lot more use and be a lot more versatile, something we can get down long driveways, so on and so forth.
And just to keep it in perspective, that ladder truck is an eighty-foot ladder truck, which I would say arguably, if you were to put it on an angle, six stories, that, that ladder truck could probably reach six, seven stories.
Uh, a little less on the, on the angle, yeah. Ladder's only between seventy-five feet and a hundred, this is eighty-one.
So if you were to compare it to buildings in this town, we don't have anything even remotely close to that height.
How much would a new one of those, um, apparatus cost?
Yeah. We brought, we brought the vendors back in, so that exact truck right now, if you bought it new, would be more like one point six million, one point seven, just to give a perspective. Again, the original cost, six years ago, it was one point two.
But I mean, the new truck, that more versatile truck that I'm looking to replace.
So it would be less. Right now, those dollars are more like one point three million.
Okay.
So. And it'd be a combination of basically two pieces. So our long-term plan also comes from another downsizing move that we had to have an engine tanker, then we would only make a tanker truck, which would be about half the cost. So we actually incorporated that in as well.
Okay.
So we'd have a pretty slimmed-down fleet, uh, that was a little more versatile. And essentially, you would be able to purchase two trucks almost for the cost of one new ladder. Years down the road.
And just one more caveat I have for the Board of Finance moving forward to, uh, bonding, we will, uh, I know this isn't the proper way to say this, but I just want to tee up that we will be looking at bonding for fire trucks down the road, because, or not down the road, maybe this year, I don't know, next year we'll have that discussion. But it does take three to four years right now to get one of those trucks delivered. So we have to have some forward thinking as to when, you know, if we need, if we're looking at, we need one of these trucks in three, four years, we should consider looking at that now. And that's all I have to say about that, so thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was something that's been brought up in a couple of meetings, in, including council. And, and it was, it was a question that council directed action for us, which is to consider just authorizing bonding, not not
Issuing.
executing the bonding, but once we authorize it, then they can go and, and put it on order, recognizing that it's a couple of years lead time. And, and that is, I think, I mean, that, that's on my list for us to discuss again, whether it's part of the budget or, or just part of a regular meeting, but I think it bears looking at because of these lead times.
Yep. It's a Mr. Kirsch's comment. That's, that is a conversation that was happening consistently at town hall between myself and the, uh, uh, Chief Catalano prior to be a P and recognized, uh, at those meetings.
So the question, my next question is, what, what do we need to do tonight? If, do they need our blessing? Do we need a formal motion?
So there was, I had discussion with Ron, go ahead, Ron.
No, um, so there is no formal policy that exists, the, you know, for a large asset sale like this. What we did when the truck was sold five, six years previously was, we brought it to this board. There's a contract with a broker who's going to be, uh, looking to sell this truck, which is going to be going through town council, uh, town attorney, with the, uh, town attorney right now. It's, we're looking to get that on the council agenda for two weeks out. So I, I think a, um, a vote by this board to approve the, um,
Sale of the truck, yeah.
The idea of the sale of the truck, so.
We could do a sense of the board tonight and do the formal motion once they approve. Would you want to do a formal motion tonight? I'm, I'm I, I favor it either way, so I don't care.
I guess my thought is it's contingent upon town council approval. I think a vote tonight would be appropriate.
Yeah, let's do a vote tonight and then, yeah.
If you want to discuss too, the, the reach out, um, because this is unique, because the bonds are still outstanding about the, um, the advice from the bond company.
Yeah, so, so the bot, the, basically, the proceeds would either need to be used for, or an already approved bonded project. Okay, so we wouldn't have to issue, um, um, or we could use it to pay down, uh, the existing debt. So from my perspective, if you already have an approved project that you were going to go issue for, why not use?
I'd use it for that, right. I would much prefer to use it for that than pay down a lower rate bond, right?
Right.
How much is left on paying off?
So I had that number and I don't have it off the top of my head. But I believe it's in the five hundred thousand dollar range.
Okay.
Nah, I don't think so.
Thank you. So those bonds are at like three point eight percent. So I'm sure today's bonds are much higher than that.
Yeah, so, so it makes sense to probably repurpose the funds.
Right. Okay.
And I just have one more question. This could be completely off topic. But in the capital plan, it says you're reevaluating the need for another tanker this year. Is that still on?
Um, no, so for us, um, I think that might be an older version. So the, the plan has, um, I know the. The plan was to approve either before the end of fiscal twenty four or early fiscal twenty five, our engine rescue replacement. Which um, Steve mentioned would probably be a three or four year before the apple of capital that has to happen. Um, what we have is around the same time, which I think is twenty eight or twenty nine. Uh, the new ladder truck and then replacement of the tanker. Uh, it would no longer be an engine tanker. It would just be a tanker truck. So one, this, this carries water. Again, that would probably be about half the cost of if we bought another engine tank. So if we get a ladder truck and that's an engine with a ladder on it, then I don't need the engine with a tanker. That way we're sort of reducing our lead size.
Okay.
Try to keep the cost manageable, just given how expensive to get trucks are.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thanks, Chief.
Alright, so you wanna make a motion for me?
Um, let me try it this way. Steve Kirsch, I move to approve the sale of. The ladder truck contingent upon the Town Council uh, approving the same.
Rebecca O'Donnell, second.
Right, that sounds perfect, Steve. Any further discussion? Were you done? Any opposed? Alright, passionately. Thank you, gentlemen. Ladies. Uh, next on the agenda is the twenty five. Budget meeting dates. Ron, you have our, what we roughly marked up.
Yeah, so, so Mike, um, you want me to just run through some of the, the notes I had taken? From our prior discussion. So, so your initial thought was, um, you thought Mondays and Thursdays would, would work best. I think for, for your schedule, I had no issues. I don't know how it, it works for everyone else. Um, the, so April fourth. I think, oh, I also think you're not, you're not around next week. Is that correct?
I'm not around next week. I'm on vacation next week.
Okay, so there's a couple of, let me just read out some uh, spring break with the schools. I don't know, uh. April fifteenth through the nineteenth. Um, that's the last week of, I think the budget is with uh, Board of Finance. Mike, you're away March twenty, March uh, twenty fourth through the thirtieth.
Correct.
Um, I just personally have some conflicts around Easter. Um, I'm gonna be away. April first and second, which is right after Easter.
Right, which is why we kind of, what we were thinking is leaving that week off and starting on the fourth, the eleventh and the eighteenth.
Correct, correct. So. What I have for my notes are April fourth, public hearing date, and then possibly, um. Um, Board of Ed.
Board of Ed, right.
Okay, um, April, April eleventh. I have um, a joint meeting with uh, Town Council.
Town Council, right.
Our capital. And certainly, you know, you can maybe piggyback something else with that. And then April eighteenth. Um, is a regular meeting date. Um, just, just full disclosure, Heidi will not be there that day. But um, we would have to, you know, that's, that would be the final day most likely. Um, and probably have to tackle, you know, revenue, fund balance, bill rate and all that fun stuff.
Are you thinking we can do it in less than three full meetings or do it basically three full?
No, we were thinking, I mean, I mean, I was thinking we could add in the fifteenth as well, just that Monday. So that we would have the eleventh, the fifteenth, the eighteenth. I just wanted to kind of backglow it a little bit, so we had as much data as possible.
That Monday, the fifteenth would be, oh no, that's spring break. So there's no Board of Ed meeting?
There's not.
There's no, okay.
Did you say you're, you're?
I'm not a gentleman.
You're not a gentleman.
But we would do Board of Ed on the fourth.
Right. You know, typically we like to get them in early with my thought process.
Yeah, and, and then the eleventh. And then.
Town Council.
Now, council wanted that on the eleventh because um, the chairman would like to, it needs to hold a, a strategic planning committee meeting before that date.
Right.
To iron out some loose ends.
Yeah, I, I mean, I was just thinking if we, if we. If we put in the fifteenth as a date, we could have the Town Council there and, and that would give us.
They specifically requested the eleven. That's.
Oh, okay.
Well.
Well, fifteenth gives them even more time to hold their, their meeting.
Yeah, I, I guess I could, right now, um.
Okay.
We could always move the, move this, you know, what we do each night, we can move around.
Yeah.
If they decide it's better for them.
Yeah, cuz I, my thought process based on our conversation last year would be to do them very close to the end. Now, now, if, if we're only in fact having three meetings, that's the, the, the meeting before the last one. If we think we might need the fifteenth, then they could come on the fifteenth. Um. But we, we, but regardless, the question in my mind is whether we ought to pencil in the fifteenth at this point and have it as a. Regularly scheduled meeting. And if we don't need it, we could cancel it.
We can, we scrap it, right.
Rather than turning it into a special meeting if we need it.
That was my thought.
Four, eleven, fifteen and eighteen.
Yep.
And the time is all six o'clock?
If that works for everybody, that works. I would always like to get started early if possible.
Okay.
Just add, I personally do have a conflict on the eleventh, so I will have to zoom in for that.
Okay.
And are we meeting with any other departments or is that a decision that we make at the public hearing?
Uh, I mean, we can decide that at any time. We can certainly, you know, add anybody if we, as we're going through, if we find stuff that we have questions on. Certainly, um, you know, we typically give them a week's notice kind of thing.
Okay.
So since we've got one, two, three weeks till our next meeting, we, we can certainly get to, to you, Mike. And, and through you to the first selectman. Um, the email, any of the departments that we all want, that, that any of us want to have come in.
Right.
Yeah, I would say if, if you could funnel everything. Through Mike and, and maybe copy, if you could copy. You could certainly copy the first selectman's office, maybe copy Heidi also.
Okay, however you want.
Does that work for everyone?
Yep.
Sorry, Heidi.
He's gotta keep us all in line anyway, so it's alright.
It's okay, Ron.
Okay.
Alright.
So. Yeah, we don't, I don't know that we need a motion, right?
Yeah, we don't.
Okay, four, April fourth, eleven, fifteenth, and the final on the eighteenth.
And.
Right.
So the public hearing on the fourth.
Yeah.
Um. Guess we could do it one of two ways. We could have it, you know, at the beginning of the meeting.
I would.
And then just uh, you know, start the budget workshop.
That's what I would do, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
Alright, so the public hearing would be at six PM.
Six o'clock, right. And I'll just roll right into our meeting.
And Board, I guess, you know. Chairman Ferris and uh, Superintendent Cobb are both there. So that will be the uh, at least the initial Board of Ed meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And, and if we have a big turnout for the public hearing that we did last year, it will last five minutes.
Six oh five, yeah.
No, that's why you do it first.
Okay, and joint capital is still the eleven. So like.
Correct. To Town Council, I mean, I'll send the indication, we're not gonna have a lot of people there.
I, I don't know, I'd be surprised if we have any, any members of the public that want to speak.
Alright, now.
I will be sure. It'll, it'll break our four-year record.
Yeah.
Exactly. Alright, uh, twenty twenty four financial reports. Ron, anything you wanna call out in general fund?
I, you know, no, you know. You know, revenue wise, um. Looking, we're, we're looking, okay, we had, we have two point six million of unassigned fund balance. Um, you know, that's, that's in the budget. Um, I don't think we're gonna need, we're not gonna need all of it. So, you know, hopefully, you know, I know our treasurer, I'm not gonna um, steal his thunder, but he's. He's bailing out the revenue side of the budget. There's gonna be some blips on the revenue side, but overall, we're gonna be fine. Between tax collections and uh, and uh. And the uh, interest revenue.
So Mike, I have one hopefully simple question for Ron on, on the budget under revenue on page one. It says we're at ninety nine point four percent under tax levy current. You count one, four, zero, 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 zero. That looks to be higher than what the tax collector is reporting. So is there something else in that?
This, the tax report is as of the end of February.
Is that what the distinction is? I mean, are, are we really at nine?
So what are you?
Ninety nine point four to look to be higher current year tax collection than I was seeing. Or could come up with from the numbers that are on various pages down in the tax collecting report. So if, essentially what that's saying. That it's, it's all current, it's none of it is prior stuff, whatever. Yeah.
Eighty four.
I mean, it's, it just, it just hit me as being.
Well, what were you, uh, when you?
Well, well, on, on whatever page it is, in her report toward the end of the packet. Um, the real estate was at ninety eight point four. The personal property was at ninety five, nine, and the, and the motor vehicle, which I know is listed separately, was just under ninety two. So again, I was just wondering how we got to ninety nine. Or if there was something I'm missing about the way these.
Heidi, can you uh, could you unmute for a sec?
Yeah, I'm, I'm checking it on my other laptop.
I know you had some uh, reconciliation issues with the uh.
Yeah, but they, they were minor. They weren't anything large. Um, I have to look at the, the way the reports were run to make sure that they were all February.
Ten days, right.
Okay.
Yeah, it looks like they're, it looks like they are February. They were run on March nineteenth, so there should be.
Excuse me, ladies and gentlemen, I have a meeting I have to attend at EMS, so I apologize, but I have to exit.
Thank you for the life, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Yes.
Steve, I see your point unfortunately, uh. Okay. You know, I mean, I can tell you what's in munis is uh, should be accurate, so.
Yeah, I'm, I'm expecting it is.
I, I can tell you. I, I tie out with the tax collector, the tax collector monthly tax reports that she gives to me. It's a, a separate um, report that you guys see in front of you. And um, I'm not sure, maybe she ran her number, numbers differently, but I tied out to her. So.
I think, I think what they're saying, so on, on the second page of her report, she's showing percents collected.
But she also has a note there that says run on January thirty first. No, that's the last bridge.
Yeah, that's with the assessor.
That's the grand list. Alright, so two twenty nines. But could it just be as simple as the fact that this QDS report and the master control was. Dated February twenty ninth and the munis report is dated March nineteen, eight, March?
No, that, because you see on, you see where it says eight, um, at the very top of the report, it says four, two, two oh, two four oh eight. So it's three eight month, yeah, which is February, so they should.
You should tie out.
They should tie out.
Alright, sounds like we gotta do a little digging on this one.
Yeah, I'm uh.
I, I mean, I would be thrilled if, if, I, I, I would be thrilled if that's really where we are.
Yeah, you know what, Steve, we'll have to get back to you.
Okay.
Law processes, it would be, it would uh, if, if it was a deposit that was, well, we, the. The effective date on the March first deposit, Heidi, would have been February twenty ninth, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. We'll have to get back to you.
Okay, fair enough.
Alright, anything else you wanna bring out, Ron?
No, it, it's, um, no, no, not unless anyone has any other question.
That's good. And the tax collector, obviously, we don't have the answer on that one, so we're gonna go right to Frank.
Well, and, and Deb's not here. My, my, I, I did have a question on, on the motor vehicle. Um, and, and I'm just curious as to why that's running so much lower as a percent collected than. The other two. Not a lot of money relatively speaking, but. Okay.
For tax collections?
Yeah, for tax collect.
I think that's typical.
Yeah.
It is typical, yeah. Definitely runs slower.
Okay. That was it.
Alright, Frank, you're up.
Um, as Ron pointed out, we're, we're running well ahead of schedule in terms of interest revenue, um. We came in at about a million nine ninety four, not about, we came in a million nine ninety four against our plan of one point three. Uh, if you look at that, that averages about two hundred and forty nine thousand a month. Steve asked me last meeting where I thought we were gonna come in, and our average was a little bit lower than that. And I said probably two five, two six. Um, right now, if you take that average and you run it out, it says we're gonna come in at two nine. But February was a very high month because we just got all the collections in. And as we get to June, it'll go down. So it really won't be that average. Ron and I were talking later. We're probably looking at maybe around two eight in terms of where we'll come in from a revenue perspective. Um, a- again, it was a very strong interest month. It was three hundred thousand dollars. Um, the stiff rate has remained um, remarkably high for longer. Uh, as of today, it was at five point three percent. Um. If we look at next year, and I know that'll be the subject of the revenue meeting. And Steve, I think, brought this question up previously, and I know in the Town Council meeting. Are there some things we can do to increase that revenue number for fiscal year twenty four, twenty five? And the answer is yes. Um. I've updated the model that I did for the first selectman back in December. Four times since, uh, just kind of keep trying. And the most recent one I did was uh. Uh, today, following Chairman Powell's comments at the Federal Reserve yesterday. He confirmed a couple of things. One, they're still looking at three cuts this year. Um, probably start June or later. Again, as we started those earlier ones, we were looking at, was it gonna be five or six cuts this year? Was it gonna start in March? So again, all those things impact. Uh, he made another comment which opened the door for potentially more cuts than you were thinking. And, and it was somewhat subtle. They moved their target in terms of adjusting. Based on unemployment, which is part of their dual mandate, down from four point one to four percent. Not a great change, but several times in his comments after that. He kept referring back to keeping their eye on unemployment. They obviously see that that's ticking up and that could have an impact on the number of cuts they do. And again, right now, we're still looking fifteen months out. Um, you know, he was talking about through the end of the calendar year. We're talking about through the end of the next fiscal year. Um, in the last meeting, we talked about getting some additional input. Uh, I have a call with uh, Gila Boss, who is Jenny's Chief Fixed Income. Uh. I don't know what you call him, an analyst or director or whatever it is, uh, on Tuesday. And I plan to. And I plan to talk to him what they look in terms of the current year, but also what they're looking at through the end of the next fiscal year and just use that as, as, as we guide it. So my plan is for the revenue meeting, whether that takes place on the 18th or 15th, wherever it is, I will provide a detailed update of the model that I've used. And again, understand that model's directional. It's not meant to be precise, but it takes a look at it month by month, takes a look at a start date where we think the interest rates are and i- it looks at a three different scenarios in terms of what number of cuts we'll take. But a- a- at this point, I would say we should feel comfortable that we can increase from the 1.6 to probably two. But we'll look at those numbers and maybe, maybe even a little more than that before we, uh, go to a final budget.
Okay. I've got one sort of technical question.
Sure.
In terms of the laddering that we've been doing.
Right.
Given that they're not cutting as much now, I would expect the interest rates to stay more at this level. Would it make more sense to go from six months to do more 12 months pushing things and, and lock, quote, lock in?
Again, we've got, we've got another set that's due this week. What, what I've done over the last three months is, because we've had all six months up to that point.
Right.
I've, I've, I've split it into one and one. Um,
Six and twelve.
Six and 12. Um, and I'm a little hesitant to do all twelves, o- only because I don't want to miss out on that portion of the short term if it stays a little bit longer. We know it's going to go down. Right now, I'm building into the model that we're going to be down to 5% by July 1. Right? Which says we're coming down, not quite a half a, a point, um, but we're coming down a bit uh, from there. So, but, but good point, and I'll take a look at, and you know, my conversation with, uh, La Boss, I'll also have some discussions on that.
Yeah.
No, that's a good point.
Okay.
That's what I've got, Mike.
Frank, just so I understand, what is the total dollar amount that we have currently? Um, with all the the pieces out there?
Well, I mean, if you look at all the pieces, you're, you're, you're talking what we have in the general fund, uh, what sits in the bank uh, with Newtown, then you're looking at what we have in terms of Janey. And then you're looking at what we have in terms of, uh, our, our treasuries. And if I look at the model that I use, which I just had updated by, uh, Chris in finance, because what I do in my model, I take what the opening balance is each month. And I run it through the year because it does make a difference seasonally. But if I take what Chris just gave me, the most recent was for February. And again, February is a big month because of all the, uh, tax payments we
Revenue's coming in January, right? Yeah, right.
As of February 1st, we had about 70 million between those three major sources. What we have in Newtown, what we have in Janey, and what we have in treasuries.
And it goes down between, uh, July.
Yeah.
So that's the
Right.
Yeah. If, if you look at June of last year, just as an example, we were at 39 million. So that's why I say I can't use the average when I look out to what it's going to be. I got to figure that it's, it's a decreasing number each month. Exactly. It, it's big in July. It's big in, you know, it's big in Jan. Yeah, February and, and August.
And, you know, when you have treasury report at the end of February, you got total, you know, cash and investment balances of, you know, almost 67 million.
Yeah.
Yeah. And hey, because what I don't include, I don't include, when I do this, I don't include some of the ancillary things like the Wilton Fund, then WMNR and some of those other smaller ones, but they do add up.
Right.
So when we're done with that, I just wanted to address some
I'm, I'm done.
Okay. So Steve, I believe, I believe the issue is in, in two reports, QDS is comparing, um, um, collections to what was billed, or munis is comparing what was collected to the budget.
Now, we do it.
In a perfect world, they would be the same.
Okay.
That makes sense. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. Yes, thanks.
And Frank, just to get back to you, I'm just, I think one of the things I want to look at when we are doing through the budget and, you know, specifically looking at your numbers is, you know, uh, how much are we leaving sitting in accounts that are not generating the same kind of percentages that we're able to generate right now? And maybe we over the next six months, you know, go a little heavier, take a look at that, if we could model out over the last two years, kind of where those balances were every month.
Yeah.
You know, track the seasonality and see how consistent it is and maybe do a catch flow model.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really a small percentage, Mike, um, because we moved a lot, for example, WMNR. We moved it so that they're now getting the stiff rate for, um, uh, for their business, where before they used to just get a straight money market. We did the same thing with the Wilton Funds. And they're really the larger of the ancillary accounts that are out there. Uh, we made those moves, I would say a year ago.
Okay. All right. Anybody got anything else? All right. One more motion.
Steve Kirsch motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Steve. We'll see you all on the 4th.